All right, looks like we are live. You may begin.
All right, thank you very much. Mayor Bagley could not be with us tonight, so as Mayor Protem, I would like to now call the June 1st, 2021 Longmont City Council Study Session to Order. Can we please start with the roll call?
Mayor Bagley. Councilmember Christianson.
Here.
Councilmember Adogal Ferring.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Peck.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Waters.
Here.
Mayor Protem, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much. Just as a reminder to the public, meetings are still being held remotely due to the ongoing novel coronavirus pandemic. Please watch the meeting livestream by clicking play on the video link within the interactive agenda window, or you can also view us on YouTube as well as longmontpublicmedia.org. At this time, we will do the pledge of allegiance and I will go ahead and lead that instead of calling on other folks. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much, everybody. Let me get here. So just as a reminder, tonight is a study session, so we will only have a public invited to be heard at the beginning of the meeting, so I'll give a couple extra minutes while we're waiting folks to call in since we will not have a second opportunity. So anyone wishing to provide public comment during Public Invited to Be Heard must watch the livestream of the meeting and call in only when the meeting is open for public comment. Callers are not able to access the meeting at any other time. As the screen is up, the toll-free calling number is 888-788-0099. Please watch the livestream and write down the meeting ID when it's displayed, as in right now. At the appropriate time, I will invite callers to call in and dial the toll-free number. Enter the meeting ID and when asked for your participant ID, press the pound sign or number sign. Please, please mute the livestream until you are called for and listen for the instructions because there is a delay between the livestream and when you would hear on your phone when it is your turn to call in. You will hear confirmation when you have entered the meeting and will be told how many others are already participating and will be placed in a virtual waiting room until admitted into the meeting. You will be called upon by the last few digits of your phone number and allowed to unmute at that time. Just remember that comments are limited to three minutes per person and each speaker will be asked to state their name and address for the record prior to proceeding with their comments. Please, once you're done speaking, hang up. At this time, we will take motions to direct the city manager to add agenda items to future agendas. Do I have any motions? Councilmember Waters.
Yeah, let me first, can I ask a question, Mayor Protem?
Absolutely.
Thanks for recognizing me. I'm wondering, have any other council members received calls from county commissioners about the county's interest in putting together a group of representatives from municipalities and from the county? The term it was used was to collaborate. I'm not certain exactly what that's going to mean. I think it's to communicate at least about what municipalities in the county intend to do, what the priorities are for the use of rescue funding that's coming into the county. With the interest being to avoid unnecessary duplications and leverage opportunities when we can, making best and highest use of the resources. Has anybody else had that conversation?
I'm not sure if hands are being raised to say that they've had communication. I will say that I have not had communication.
I know that I had a conversation with Commissioner Lochemine and I know she reached out to the mayor. I don't know if she closed that loop or he closed that loop with her. But the reason I bring it up is that if I got a text earlier today, just a little bit ago, that they're planning a proceeding and would like our involvement. And I think what they'd like is probably one of us and likely somebody from the city manager's team and maybe others, I don't know, but it may be our experts on the use of ARPA funding. But anyway, I'd hate to not respond if they're putting that together.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Waters. I would say that while I haven't heard about it and have not been briefed by the mayor, I would like to take this time to allow councilmembers to chime in on this specific topic first. And then if they have anything additional, we'll address that next. Councilmember Peck, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rodriguez and Councilman Waters. I have heard, not specifically from the commissioners, but I did have a conversation with Claire Levy about what I heard, and this was from another mayor in Boulder County, that the concern, and this mayor had said she had met with our mayor Bagley, that what they would like is for the local municipalities shares of whatever dollars they receive to be put into a communal bundle that would be in the county and that it would be, then we would meet. And it sounds a little bit like the tip process on Dr. Cog, where the municipalities with a bundle of money decide which areas of concern are the most important. But Commissioner Levy denied that. She said, no, if that's the message going out, it's the wrong message. But that is the message I heard from another mayor. This was discussed at the MCC meeting, if I remember correctly.
All right, thank you very much. Next is Councilmember Martin.
Thanks, I just would put in that I didn't pay a lot of attention to it because it wasn't a dated invitation, but I did on a personal email based on an interest group, just to notice that this was in the works. So, you know, I can't really offer any information, but I can't say that there's been complete radio silence either.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Christianson.
I just think our whole council needs to be informed about this and if possible, all of us need to be participating in it. I understand that becomes unwieldy. I have the consortium of cities tomorrow night and that's a, you know, a collection of representatives, some of them mayors, some of them councilmembers from all over the county. And I'll ask them what they're doing and report back to you, but this is really a lot of money and I think we all ought to be part of it, so thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Adogal Ferring.
I do have a question. I know before the pandemic, we had talked about having a joint meeting with the Boulder County Commissioners. Do we have anything scheduled? Are anything lined up to meet with them? I think this would be, if we have something coming up in the next month or so, I think maybe this would be a good time to discuss this because as Councilmember Christians had said, I think it really needs to be a council to commissioner board meeting. So we are all privy as to the information that's being shared firsthand. Do we have anything scheduled in the works?
Sandy is looking at that. In terms of the meeting, I haven't seen anything on my schedule. Just what I've seen in another email is that they were looking at how we handled the collaborative from the 2013 flood as a forum for the conversation. And the areas that they wanted to look at for collaboration were, and I think it's different, so housing, how can we meet our 12% goal, human services, and how those funds go there, digital divide, broadband, and business support. But they haven't scheduled a date to meet. And so, or at least I haven't heard of a date to meet, and so I can follow up with the mayor to see if he's received an email on this. In terms of the county commissioner meeting, that is going to be on the 29th of September. That's been scheduled for the 29th of September. But in terms of this other conversation, I'd heard that from some council members, but in terms of an actual meeting, I haven't been made aware of that.
Okay, because I am interested in following up in a meeting with, to discuss this particular topic with our Boulder County Commissioners. I think any opportunity we have to meet as a council to commissioners board, I think would be great. So, you know, I am willing to make time in my schedule to appear if we have any, you know, if they are interested in meeting with us as a council. I would support that.
All right, thank you very much. So, Councilmember Waters, you've gotten a fair amount of information back. Would you like to make a motion or clarify anything?
I guess maybe I would do this. If this is going to be something that's handled by the consortium of cities, then Councilmember Christianson obviously is already our liaison. If it's something different from that, it seems to me that we ought to have a council liaison or a council representative. So I'd move that we appoint someone and then so that we're ready to have somebody and take our priorities into those conversations. That's different, obviously, than the whole council meeting with county commissioners, which I hope, well, we're obviously scheduled in September. So I would move that we identify somebody and at least get that council member ready to represent our priorities when the opportunity comes.
There's a motion on the table. For lack of a second, the motion fails. Next on my list of speakers would be Councilmember Peck.
I'm sorry, my hand wasn't up for a question or a comment.
All right, thank you. The next hand up that I saw was Councilmember Christianson.
When I spoke about the consortium of cities, I don't think this is something they will take the lead in or do whatever, you know, that isn't exactly what they do, but because that does not include all three of the county commissioners, and I think we should meet with all three of the county commissioners and all of us as a body, because we act as a body. That's all I'm suggesting.
Yeah, and just for, oh, sorry.
Harold, go ahead.
And just for, you know, what I'm seeing here, it looks like it's not just Longmont. Looks like they want to get Boulder, Longmont, Lewisville, Lafayette, Superior, Jamestown, and Lyons into the conversation. So it seems much broader than just the Longmont conversation. But I just sent an email to see if they've set a meeting because I haven't had a meeting invite or anything, just an interest piece. And so as soon as I hear something, I'll let council know.
I was going to say real briefly before I call on Councilmember Martin, that it sounds like this is still in the very early stages and that we may not be close to a true functional organization for this concept yet, but that just seems to be what I'm hearing so far as various pieces of the conversation. Councilmember Martin, please.
Thank you. I was just going to say the same thing as the Mayor Protem, pretty much. I didn't second this because it doesn't seem like we know enough about how it's going to be organized in order to decide whether we need an appointee or what. So it seems like we've got time if there haven't been any invitations yet.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Waters.
I'll pass. I was just going to ask for clarification that this council doesn't want somebody from this council as a representative to a group that the county commissioners intend to convene. Just to be clear, but it sounds like, well, maybe if you had more information about it, so I'll let it go there.
You know, I would agree with you, Councilmember Waters, that if there is such an ad hoc group, I would definitely want somebody, be it either from the staff or the council or both, to be a member of that decision-making process, as in this was something that we kind of heard about as problematic when we were talking about the compost facility earlier, is that we were not necessarily included in these conversations. And so I think that we should be consistent and that would be consistent, but I guess until we hear something a little bit more definite, we're not quite there yet. All right. Are there any other motions to the city manager at this time? Seeing none.
Okay. Mayor Protem, I will just tell you on this conversation with staff, because the way the money's being allocated, we're going to be very careful with it because ultimately we're responsible for it, unlike in the way some of the other funds came down into the collaborative. And so there will be some technical pieces we're going to really need to understand too when they move into this conversation.
All right, thank you very much. As you can see, there's a lot of moving pieces here, not just within the city, but also within the county and the other municipalities within our county. So looking forward to these conversations because it will just help us provide certainty towards our governance as well as the governance surrounding us. At this time, though, I would like to invite the public to call in. The information is being displayed on the screen. Make sure to please mute the livestream and dial in now. We will take the entire five minutes and maybe even leave it open a little bit longer because this is the only time tonight that people can call and invite and make their comments because this is a study session tonight. So five minutes from now, council, I expect to see you all back and we'll listen to some comments. Thank you.
For folks watching at home, now is the time to call in for the public invited to be heard. Please dial the number that you see on your screen, which is 1-888-788-0099 and enter the meeting ID 871-5789-3403. And if prompted for a participant ID, please press the pound or hash sign. Remember to mute the livestream when you call in so that you don't hear feedback. When is your turn to speak? When you come into the meeting, we will call on you by the last three digits of your phone number. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes. Welcome to the callers who just entered the room. We are going to hang tight for a few more minutes to give folks some more time to call in, and we'll get started here shortly by calling on you by the last three digits of your phone number.
All right, if councilmembers can start making their way back. All right, looks like we have all the councilmembers back. If we could just leave the meeting open for the first caller, and then after the first caller is done, then we can close if there are any callers.
All right, Mayor Protem, we do have one caller, so I will leave the screen up for that one caller. See if we get any other folks call in. Caller with the number ending in 285, I'm going to ask you to unmute. You can do so by hitting star six on your phone. Please state your name and address for the record and you will have three minutes.
Yes, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
Great. Thank you. My name is Gary Hassan Flu, 5635 High Drive, Mission Hills, Kansas. I'm owner of the Garrison Companies, which is a mixed-use development company based in Kansas City, but does a lot of work in Colorado. And I was calling to tell you that I think it's a great idea with you all moving forward with the Main Street Corridor Plan. It'll be a fabulous way to redevelop and re-energize that area. You know, so many of us developers like a comprehensive plan for an area that we develop in. And I can tell you that we are interested in developing in that area and very much like the idea of a good plan for that area. Good planning, development incentives, and affordable housing. I think it'd be, I very much encourage you to move forward through the process to allow that type of re-energization of that area as soon as you practically can. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That was about a minute and a half of his time, so have we gotten any other callers?
I know, Mayor Protem, we do not have any other callers.
All right, very well. That will conclude Public Invited to Be Heard for this evening. At this time, we'll proceed to special reports and presentations. I do not see any on the agenda, so just to get a confirmation from Harold that we do not have any. All right, I'm seeing none. That means that will move us into our study session items for tonight. The first item being the rate study introduction in operating expenses, and I believe that Becky Doyle will be walking us through this. So I'd like to invite her to the meeting if available.
It's actually not me this evening, Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Sorry, that's my script.
I think Dale's going to start us off.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez and City Council. So tonight, we're starting and actually continuing that discussion with regards to analyzing the efficiency of our rates, in particular in two of the utilities of the city. First, the electric utility, and then secondly, the storm drainage utility. Interestingly, both of these utilities are sort of facing some difficult and unique sort of challenges. Storm drainage in particular has been heavily influenced and drawn upon, if you will, since the 2013 flood. And we're really at a point in time wherein the revenues coming into the storm drainage utility are no longer sufficient for us to maintain the integrity of that system. And so it is similar to the discussions that we've had with you on water and sewer. All of these utilities, quite frankly, are quite capital intensive, especially the wet utilities, the water, the sanitary, and the storm sewer. And so, you know, tonight, we're going to be talking about the operating expenses. In a future meeting, we're going to be talking about the capital side of the equation because we have to pay attention to both. And then lastly, with regards to the electric utility, as council knows, we have a very important goal in front of us for 2030, namely to achieve 100% renewable, carbon-free electric generation in our community. And I think it's important, if you recall, when we did the last rate study in electric, we only did it for two years for a couple of reasons. One was because of the changing environment in the electric utility world. In other words, it wouldn't be wise to try to put out a five-year rate plan, given all the specific changes going on and different changes. But we're still in that type of environment. So what you're likely going to hear is, again, another fairly short-term rate adjustment in the electric utility. So as to, first of all, first and foremost, again, maintain the financial integrity of the utility, but also to acknowledge the changing environment as we move towards the 100% renewable goal. So the staff's going to talk to you more about that this evening, and you're going to hear a lot more about that as we go through. Later in June, we're going to be returning to you with another presentation, and then I believe another one in the July-August timeframe. Again, we're trying to do this so that council is fully appraised of the situation, the options that you have in front of you before we ever ask you to make a decision with regards to any rate adjustments. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Raven, who is actually new to making presentations to the city council, but Raven does a great job. And if you have any questions, I can take those now. Otherwise, Raven, I believe, will be ready when we get the slideshows pulled up.
I see no questions from the council this time, so whenever Raven's ready.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez and members of council.
Mayor Proton Rodriguez and members of council. I'm Raven Martin with PW and R Business Services. And tonight, Brian McGill and I will be presenting information about proposed rate studies for electric and storm drainage. LPC and PW and R are jointly conducting our rate studies because conducting them at the same time reduces multiple rate increases at different times, which can be daunting to the public. Next slide, please. Municipal utilities are typically nonprofit and seek only to cover the cost of providing services to the community. The method for doing this is common regardless of the service provided. The first step is to determine what the revenue requirements are, which is how much money is needed to deliver the programs and services that have been approved by council to serve the community. That revenue requirement is typically split between operating expenses and capital expenses. We will be coming back to the council at the end of June to speak more about capital expenses, but tonight we will focus on operating expenses. Once we know what the total revenue requirement is, we allocate those costs among the customer classes. This aims to determine the cost of providing services to each class. Residential services as a class, for example, commercial customers as a class, and so on. To do this, we look at service characteristics aiming to determine which parts of the system each class is using. The cost of service analysis is the part of the rate study which allows us to analyze these components. The rate proposal portion of the rate study allows us to look at the various ways that these costs can be recouped based on the rate design implemented. Next slide, please. Determining the revenue requirements allows the city to ensure that we have sufficient revenue to operate the utilities sustainably in the future. The cost of service analysis ensures that we have equity among various customer classes so that each customer class is paying their fair share and not paying for the cost of providing service to a different customer class. The rate proposal portion of the rate study allows us to consider what other goals the council and community might have, such as what behavior we would like to incentivize and how are commodities priced to achieve those behaviors? Next slide, please.
Good evening, Mayor Proton Rodriguez, members of council. My name is Brian McGill, utility rate analyst with Longmont Power and Communications. And tonight, we'd like to introduce the topic of operating expenses because operating expenses form the majority of the revenue requirement for both the storm drainage and electric utilities. For storm drainage, the operating expenses account for 60% of the total revenue requirements, with the other 40% being debt service, which Raven will talk about in a minute, and capital projects, which we will be discussing with you at the end of the month. For the past several years, the electric utilities' operating expenses have accounted for 99% of the total revenue requirements. However, for the next couple of years, that percentage will be lower due to the advanced metering infrastructure capital project. These two pie charts represent the operating expenses from the 2021 budget for the two utilities. While the budget amounts differ greatly, the expense categories are similar because they demonstrate the operating and maintenance cost of providing both of these services. The one exception is the purchased power expense on the electric side, which is the largest expense by far. The purchased power expense covers Longmont's portion of Platte River Power Authority's costs to provide electricity to our city. This is more than just the cost to generate and deliver electricity. It is also the O and M expenses associated with the generation facilities, including the renewable energy generation facilities. It also covers the O and M expenses on the transmission lines and PRPA's administrative and general costs. If we were to remove the purchased power expense for comparison purposes, you can see that personnel expenses would be the largest category for both utilities. The other expense types the utilities share are operating and maintenance and transfers to the general fund, which includes the administrative transfer fee for services provided by the general fund divisions, such as accounting, legal, and HR services. For the electric utility, this also includes a franchise fee, which is 8.64% of most electric revenue streams. However, the storm drainage utility does not pay a franchise fee. The final expense that is included in both utilities is the replacement of the Customer Information System, or CIS, which is the city's utility billing and customer service system. Next slide, please. This graphic displays how Platte River's wholesale rates stack up against the other regional providers. We are showing the 2019 rates because not all the 2020 rates have been published yet. And it is fortunate for Longmont that PRPA's rates are low because this allows LPC to keep overall costs low, which translates into low electric rates for our customers, including the second lowest residential rates in Colorado out of the 43 utilities that responded to the January survey. Next slide, please. This chart is a brief history of the budgeted expenses in the electric utility. As you can see, expenses increase over time, including purchase power expense. We generally anticipate a 3% annual increase in operating expenses due to inflation, increased cost of inputs, and the growth in the number of customers we serve. An exception to this is the purchased power expense for which we receive a long-term forecast from PRPA. The reason there is a decrease from 2020 to 2021 is due to the amount budgeted for the new Customer Information System. This expense decreased from $2.3 million in 2020 to $500,000 in 2021. If we were to remove the CIS expense, you would see a slight increase from 2020 to 2021. Next slide, please. Okay, now I'm going to turn it back over to Raven and she'll talk more in depth about the storm drainage utility. Thank you.
Over the same timeframe, in the storm drain budget, personnel is the largest expense, followed by operating and maintenance expenses, which have stayed relatively the same over the last several years. The CIS funding has decreased as has decreased for this project as it has been allocated in previous years. Next slide, please. Cost drivers for the storm drainage utility are quite different, however. Rather than providing a commodity, the storm drainage utility is focused on maintaining its assets and meeting regulatory requirements. The city's MS4 permit for the municipal storm drainage system outlines requirements the city must meet to maintain the health of our waterways by ensuring the water quality of runoff. Most of this cost is reflected in personnel, where the regulatory program represents approximately 20% of the overall expense. In addition to the operating expenses for maintaining the storm drainage utility and meeting regulatory requirements, another primary driver of storm drainage utility cost is debt service. The storm drainage utility issued revenue bonds in 2008 to fund improvements to drainage ways such as Lichens Gulch and Spring Gulch Number Two, as well as bridge replacements of Left Hand Creek and South Prep Parkway, as well as the construction of a regional detention pond north of Highway 66. A special election authorized additional debt following the devastating flood in September of 2013. Using bond proceeds as local match funding, $34.6 million in federal funding has been leveraged to complete the funding portfolio for this extensive drainage improvements. While the total outstanding principal balance for all storm drainage bonds is currently over $21 million, the annual payment for principal and interest in 2021 is $2.4 million. The annual percentage payment is not reflected in the graph above, which is limited just to the cost of operation, but it is a critical component of the overall revenue requirement that will be presented following a review of capital requirements. Next slide, please. Because you have seen these before, I will not spend time going over these items in detail, but wanted to present them to ensure that these goals are aligned with council's goals. If there are any specific questions, we can return to this slide. Next slide, please. At the end of June, we will be presenting information on the capital expenses and associated fees portion of the rate study. In August, we will be presenting to council the rate proposals. This year's rate study for electric will propose a two-year rate schedule for adoption. And the storm drainage rate study will propose a three-year rate schedule for adoption, starting in 2022. Next slide, please. Thank you so much for your time this evening, and please let us know what questions you have.
Just cracked in my hand. I was like, I didn't do anything. All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Peck.
Thank you for this presentation. It was very informative, but I do have a question of Raven. When you talk about the debt service for the water, can you tell me the storm drainage, I mean, can you tell us when that debt service will be retired? And is, do we only have the one bond issue that we put to the public? Or is there more than one bond?
I'm going to ask Becky Doyle to answer this question. I believe she has the information.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Proton Rodriguez, Councilmember Peck. We have two outstanding bond issuances right now. The first from 2008 will be paid off in 2028. These are both 20-year bonds. And the second issued in 2014 will be paid off in 2034.
Okay, that answered my question. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I have two questions. First, about the Customer Information System. Even though it was, it's not shown as a line item on in 2018. It was under discussion in in 2018. So somebody was working on it, even if it isn't a thick enough slice to to show up on the bar graphs. So my question is, oh, why is the investment going down? And what milestones on this project have been achieved? Because I don't believe we have a new customer information system. I haven't seen the paper in my bill change or anything. So where do we stand on that? And why is the expense going down?
Let me see if anybody will.
So Mayor Proton Rodriguez and Councilmember Martin, a couple of thoughts on that. So the costs aren't going down. What you're seeing is that we're appropriating funds in multiple years for the project. And and I think we appropriated significantly more money back in 2020 than what we're needing to appropriate in 2021. But the project costs unfortunately have not gone down. And in fact, they may have increased a bit. As far as milestones, David can correct me, but I believe we're we're close to sending the RFP out. As you know, we have been closely working on both the electric AMI project as well as the CIS and making sure that those two projects are synchronized and working together. So the AMI project RFP went out a month or so ago. I believe we're due to receive those proposals in June. We will then have that information in front of us as we issue out the RFP for the CIS system. I think that will help us to sync up those two projects so as to get best value, right, back for the city in the overall project. Does that answer your questions?
Most of it, thank you. So those yellow bars are appropriations and not expenditures. So there's, there's, there's money in a sack somewhere for when we actually get ready to spend money on the CIS.
Yeah, so if you remember in the carry, in the carryover ordinances that we do on an annual basis, the only fund that we don't have to do that on is our public improvement fund. So if you remember, you will see those in the carryover for our hats project where we may fund them pretty heavy in one year, but then we just carry those funds over into the following years so we can expend them on those projects. And so that's why you see the difference.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have is is regarding expenditures, operating expenditures. And this this kind of shades over into capital expenditure, so I'm giving you an out here. But in the last two years of the rate study for electric, a a big part of that was planned capital expenditures for the AMI and for grid enhancements. Those were going to be underway, but they're not yet. Is is that going to be something that impacts this rate study? And if so, how? What can we expect to to see in terms of our rates? And then I have one more question about definition of terms.
Mayor Proton Rodriguez, Councilmember Martin, Brian McGill. Yeah, so what we did for the AMI project is, in the past two, in the previous rate study, we said that we were gonna, we included $2.5 million each year for the AMI project. So that will, that should just continue into the future until until it completely pays off that AMI program. We're planning to use fund balance when we use the actual expenditures because we won't have collected all of the, we won't have collected sufficient funds for the entire project. And when we have to actually make those expenditures, I think that answers the question.
I'm not sure whether it does or not. I guess that my my question is whether we we expected to be in the in the payout phase of of this fund accumulation by now and and what impact that's going to have on rates that we're not yet, because it seems to me like we've, we've, again, got more money in the sack than we expected to have at this point.
So I think you're right. We've collected, we've collected AMI funds in 2020, and we're going to collect more additional AMI funds in 2021, but only at the $5 million level, where the the project's going to cost significantly more than that. So we do have some funds built up to put towards the AMI project, but we still need to collect funds in the future as well to finish that, to completely pay for that project.
Okay, and then I promise this is the last question. But there was language in the packet about avoiding cross-class subsidies. And without knowing a more precise definition of a class, I'm I'm not sure how that's done because we had, in in our previous rates, we had cross-tier subsidies. And so I would like to understand the difference.
Yeah, so when we talk about classes, we're really talking about residential versus commercial. And then there's a different, there's just a residential energy class, the residential demand class, the self-generation class, small commercial, large commercial, industrial customers.
Um. So don't those different? I don't remember what you called them, rate classes or commercial. I mean, I understand it's it's very different between residential and commercial. But a a consumer could could change from a low consumption class, which is in one rate tier, to another one just by buying an electric vehicle, for example. So what does it really mean to say we don't have cross-class subsidies if those, that consumer might be in one class at one time of the year and another class at another time of the year?
If I could jump in. This is Kate Medina, Director of Internal Services at LPC. What we do is we look at the various classes that Brian mentioned and how are they contributing to the peak? And then we decide how much money do we have to collect from each rate class to cover their, the expense to serve that customer? And so we we set rates different. We don't have a, you know, a flat rate for everybody. So then we have the various commercial rates and the various residential rates. What we don't want to do is have a residential customer paying for commercial usage. So we want to make sure that the class that's using the energy, they're paying for that appropriately.
If I can jump in, I think the class is residential commercial. The tiers are the tiers within resident, within residential. And so when we structured the rates the last time, you had the higher tiers supporting the lower tiers, if I'm lower usage tiers. That's within the class that you all dictated. What we're talking about is out of class, meaning residential or commercial, or commercial residential.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Waters, I saw your hand first, so I'll go with you. And then Councilmember Peck, I saw your hand second.
Thanks, Mayor Pro Tem. To Harold and Dale and, and the team, that's a nice presentation. And, and you know, as we build our knowledge base, as we head into the budgeting cycle, you're getting us ready to make decisions that undoubtedly the recommendation will be based on need to increase rates in at least two areas here. Is that fair?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So in, in the, in the narrative, I appreciate, and I hope others will read and appreciate as well, your reference to Longmont having the second lowest residential electric rates out of the 44 electric utilities that responded to the Colorado Association of Municipal Utilities Rate Survey. When we get to the point that you're bringing the recommendation specifically to what rates, what you're proposing, what the rate should be, all this discussion about classes and, and tiers and how it's going to apply. Is it going to be possible for you to, to pick from that list of 44 comparable-sized communities to Longmont? And given what we understand about what their rate structures, what costs would be for residents in Longmont if they lived in whatever those communities are, using the same level of electricity or paying the storm drainage fees? So we could get a, a side-by-side? It's, we, no matter, I mean, the, the narrative here is, is, is clear, and I appreciate it. But we all know that in January of 2000, or whenever the rates go into effect, no matter how much discussion we have, we're going to hear a lot about that. We're going to read about it. We're going to hear about it. And it'll be, it would be really helpful, Dale, if, if we could just have some real, real benchmarking, right? Of, of where we end up with whatever our rate structure is and have some comparables to, to other municipalities of comparable size. So we could, so our residents could see it, and we have that information when we're engaged with residents about, understand the rate went up, we made that decision, but let's look at where we are with some specific examples in comparison to, to other communities. Is that possible?
At Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Waters, absolutely. And not only that, we believe it's important to show the entire cost to our customers. So in other words, we're going to look at their entire utility bill. But we, we can also break out electric and storm, and we can break it out in, in any number of different ways. And you're absolutely right. It's important for us to provide accurate information, both to the community as well as the council, so that you're informed as you're making those decisions. And it is important to understand how we sort of stack up, right, with our neighbors. I've always said, though, at the end of the day, what I've heard back from customers is, but I don't live in Fort Collins and I don't live in Boulder. I live here. And all I know is my bill's gone up. So we are very sensitive to that issue, because that's the reality for our customers, is, is their bill, right, their bill in their city. And so I believe we stack up very well. I think we have efficiently run utilities and organizations. And so we hope to maintain that trust, not only with council, but with the public through this process.
Thanks, Dale.
And I think what I'm going to ask them to do, if I can jump in, is to, to do it on a low, medium, and high user, understanding that they can move between different, you can be low electric, high water, but just do low, medium, and high to kind of give a sense of what that impact is at, at the different levels. So I asked them to add that to it.
More will be better than less at that point in time terms of comparison, I think. So thanks.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rodriguez. Dale, this is also for you. I'm wondering if it would be possible, as we try to move more toward renewable energy within our city, if we could have some comparison with electric rates? If people would go to solar or wind power on their homes? To help us educate people and to move this whole conversation and transition a little more toward renewable energy? Would that be possible? Are there any, is there any data on comparing the electric bills, the, the utility rates?
Sure.
That, I think that would be really helpful as we, as a council, try to move forward.
So Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Peck, what I'd say to that is, I'm more than happy to share my bill out here with United Power. I'll be the guinea pig. And unfortunately for me, being a United Power customer is, I have no doubt I'm going to be paying more than what a Longmont solar customer will pay. But I'll, I'll tell you this, if that's not the case, the Longmont customer should be paying less for solar, just as they're paying less for electric power in general. And so I think we need to re-maintain our competitive edge in, in all forms of energy generation. And, and I agree with you as well. I, if we have the ability to further incentivize, I call it distributed energy generation within our community. We have to be looking at that. And there's a number of things we can do. We can start requiring solar on all new houses, which by the way, is not an unusual phenomenon these, at these days. In the entire state of California, you do not build a new house without solar. And so there's a number of things that I think as we move towards together, right, the 100% goal, we got to look at everything, so.
Thank you so much.
All right, I saw Councilmember Christensen's hand go up. Did you still want to say anything? No? Okay, you're good. Just as a quick two cents from me is that I, I think that what we might hear from some folks is when they saw some of the same graphs that we saw, showing that the budgetary allocation for the customer information system, the CIS, going down on both the electric as well as stormwater. The folks are going to ask us why we need to raise rates. And so I just hope that that's included in the presentation when we get to that actual point of talking about specific rates. Because I know those graphs that we were shown were not the most scientific, if you will, which is fine. I think they demonstrated their point adequately. But I just want to make sure that, that's, that's clarified when we get to that point of our series of, of conversations here. And okay.
Mayor Pro Tem, just to add to that, you're absolutely right. And as Paul Harvey used to say, we have to tell you the rest of the story. And the rest of that story is the capital side of the equation. What you're going to see is we're quite challenged on the capital side. And, and, and in some ways, just maintaining the reliability of the existing systems. And so that's where we're going to focus, is reinvesting back into the assets of these utilities so as to continue to provide the level of service that Longmont customers expect and have relied on, that that can carry into the future. So you're going to see that towards the end of June. But great question and great point.
Well, thank you. And believe you me, there's no, well, there could be just as big of champions as I of the infrastructure that our, our city needs to not just maintain the great level of service that we have, but also to accommodate the, the growth that we're seeing, not just here in Longmont, but across the Front Range. And so yes, we have to deal with it as well. And being smart about that includes continuing to monitor as well as account for our infrastructure. But I did see Councilmember Martin's hand go up, so if she was still, okay. Yes, Councilmember Martin, please.
Every so often, my spacebar decides not to work. It is capital expense. And so I was, I was sort of trying to have mercy, because I already asked a bunch of questions. But, you know, since the, the idea of solarization has been brought up, and since Dale has said something ominous about capital expenditures in general, I'm wondering if in the transition to capital expenses, are we going to, to learn the number of net meters that we have here in Longmont now? And the amount of revenue that is generated by the addition, difference in the connect fee for net metering users?
I'll let Brian and Dave reply to that, but I would hope that is information we're going to be able to share with council.
Thank you.
Yes, David Hornbacher here, Councilmember Martin. Yes, we can provide that type of information as to the number of net meters and really more specifically sort of what that looks like from a financial perspective.
Thank you, Director Hornbacher.
Harold, you can go ahead and chime in if you'd like. Outside of that, I would call on Councilmember Peck next.
And I just wanted to say, I think part of that, when we talk about distributed energy, that's going to be a different conversation that we're going to bring in, in conjunction of the entire rate study as well.
So thanks again. Real fast, as we brought this around to infrastructure, and I know that staff is really, really good about looking for grants, doing grants, but in this huge package for, that is, that is, has a huge climate change focus that is coming from the federal government. Before we go into costs and stuff, are, for capital improvements, do you think any of this would fall under the grant opportunities for infrastructure, climate change, et cetera? Is there a possibility that we could get some dollars from the federal government for this?
Mayor Pro Tem Rodriguez and Councilmember Peck, I'll say this, I'm always the optimist. I would hope we're going to go after every dollar we can. And certainly to the extent that we're successful doing that, which, and we have a pretty good track record. You do. I always think we can do better, but you bet, we're going to go after that. And then what that does for us is it, it may not influence the, like, the next year rate increase, but it certainly does start to stabilize the utility in a way so that our customers are not having to bear the full cost of bringing these systems up to, you know, up to current standard. And so to the extent we can finance that with assistance from the federal or state government, absolutely, we're going to do that. And that will stabilize, that will help to stabilize your rates so that you're not continually having to increase the rates in the absence of that kind of funding.
So Dale, I think in the presentation to the public, that point would be well-accepted so that they know that it isn't just us going after more money from our residents, but that we're looking at all, all types of grants and input. So thank you once again.
All right. At this time, seeing no other comments from council, I would like to move to accept the rate study introduction and operating expenses report as presented by staff.
Second.
All right. Thank you very much. I moved. And I believe Councilmember Martin was the first one to second the item. At this time, I'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the motion passes six to zero with Mayor Bagley absent. Thank you very much, staff, that has brought us the rate study. At this time, we're going to move on to our next study session item, rental housing licensing and inspections. At this time, I'd like to invite Glenn Van Neemvegen and Dane Hermsen and any other staff members that would, will be presenting or speaking on this topic.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Rodriguez. We, I think we presented you a program that, first off, let me just say, I'm the planning director for the City of Longmont. And that includes responsibility, not only for planning, but code enforcement. So we are part of the solution of making sure there's safe and decent housing for our rental residents in the City of Longmont. But we're only one part of that. And so I did invite a couple of other guests, one of them being Susan Spalding, who is the Community Relations Specialist in Community Services. And she runs a mediation program. And two of her probably largest clients are either property owners or residents that have issues with their rental housing. So we often interact with her because we may get a complaint about a substandard housing unit and not find enough, and maybe there's other issues involved. So Susan will kind of pick up the ball from there and hopefully get these folks into a mediation program so we can find a solution for their issues. Or it could work the other way. They're, through mediation, they might find out that there are some serious physical issues with their rental housing unit. And they'll bring Dane in to investigate from there. So Susan is here to answer any questions that you might have. I've also invited Master Police Officer Sarah Arney with, of course, the Police Department. And she's responsible for the Crime Free Housing Program that has been in place, I think, close to a decade in, well, six years? 16 years? Now.
Sorry, 11.
11 years. Thank you. Good hand signals, though. That was effective. But what that program does is partner directly with residents and property owners to do an audit of the property and also just ways of proactively reducing crime in residential rental housing projects. And then, of course, our Dane Hermsen, who is our Senior Code Enforcement Inspector. He's also a certified housing inspector. So when we have issues regarding the safety of a, a particular unit, we will call on Dane. And I wanted to show you, this is what we use. We use the International Property Maintenance Code. It's, as you can see, it's a pretty concise volume in comparison to other building codes, but it hits on pretty effectively all those main aspects of how to keep a rental residential housing unit safe and, and good for residents from now until into the future. So that is what we use to, as a guide when we get housing inspections. And what I thought I'd do is we kind of laid out a pretty big tool that, for council to consider, which would be changing from a complaint basis to a proactive basis where we're licensing and then requiring inspections of any residential rental property. And we could set different criteria of what those properties are. But I thought I would just pause and see if, did we miss the mark? Are, are we really addressing with this program what council had intended? So Mayor Pro Tem, I, I don't have to launch into a full presentation, but I think it would be worth if we just kind of start that discussion there, if that would be okay.
Fair enough. I did not have a full presentation on my agenda for this item.
So I don't really have a formal presentation. I would just walk you through our staff report and answer any questions.
Fair enough. And I, I assume that my colleagues on council have gone through the packet as provided to us. So at this time, I will move on to some, at least, questions. And then maybe we'll, we'll transition again to more staff, but, Councilmember Martin, please.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I did go through the packet, and it was, in fact, quite informative. Did I understand correctly that you were thinking of not including single-family detached rentals in, in this process?
Yeah, the, the program, Councilmember Martin, the program that we laid out is, I was just looking at some of the other communities and just guessing at what those criteria would be. So you're correct, we didn't include single-family residences that are being rented in the numbers we provided you.
Okay, and that, you know, the reason that I asked is that I talked to a number of residents who rent. And also, I, I will say, just to give credit where it's due,
And also, I will say, just to give credit where it's due, landlords who were very helpful in, in increasing my understanding of, of what goes on with them and what is important to them. But a number of concerns about, from people in neighborhoods who have a fraction of their houses as rentals, as well as a number of renters have possibly even disproportionate concerns if they're renting a single-family home.
Yeah, it's the only, the, the only program we saw that included single-family residents was in Boulder. They have quite a robust system where they look at everything that's being rented. And they not only look at it from a property maintenance code, but also from an energy efficiency and dark sky requirements as well. So that's the only community I'm familiar with that, that goes beyond attached rental properties.
Okay, and then I have one other question that's kind of related, and then I'll let somebody else ask the rest of the questions. But you didn't say anything about how much licenses or inspection fees were going to cost, or whether that was even the funding mechanism that you had in mind. And of course, everybody, no matter which side of the fence they're on, goes straight to that when they're talking about it. So can you elaborate on that a little bit more?
Sure, you're right. I didn't really go into fees for the license and inspections. I, I can tell you the communities I looked at probably averaged about forty to fifty dollars of an inspection fee. So, and if you apply that to the numbers we gave you of about fifty-five hundred units, it potentially could create, you know, upwards of two hundred thousand dollars a year. That would help us defray some of the costs. And then licensing fees, if we do it annually, I've seen everywhere, everything from fifty to a hundred dollars on top of that. So there would be some potential offsetting revenues.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And that, Boulders are a lot higher than that, but as you said, they're doing a lot more with it, right?
Correct, yeah.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Christensen is next, and then Councilmember Peck will be after that.
A lot of the questions I was going to ask, Councilwoman Martin already asked, and I appreciate that. So I do think, yes, that people are very concerned about the cost. And I, I want to also, I, I do think that you telling us that means that out of forty or fifty dollars, once every two years to four years, that is not really going to ruin any landlords, and fifty to a hundred dollars a year is also for, just for a license fee. That's not per unit, that's for a licensing fee. I don't think that's going to harm anybody, and it will help offset the program. And this is not to demonize either landlords or tenants. This is so that the city can operate like a professional organization, have a database of what sort of housing stock we have, understand who owns the housing stock, provide for the health and safety of the people living in the housing stock, and also put all landlords on the same basis so that the people, the landlords who are not actually maintaining their buildings right now have a tremendous advantage over the people who actually do take care of their buildings. And that's not fair. So I, I wanted to ask a question about the International Property Maintenance Code. I do think that there's concern, justifiably, on the point of landlords thinking we're going to make them upgrade to every code. I think from what you've written down here that, I'm hoping this is the IPMC, is a fairly robust, but still not code nitpicking. It's just saying, I would hope that this unit does not have leaking gas pipes. It does not have leaking sewer, leaking sewer lines, leaking water lines, a roof that is leaking, faulty electrical circuits, all the things that could actually kill a tenant or certainly cause property damage and causes a lot of problems for landlords. Is that correct, that it's the IPMC is looking for the most basic problems with a unit, not looking for every single, what may be something that, in, in a house that was built forty years ago, we're not expecting them to upgrade it to code?
Yeah, I'll ask Dane, who's, who's the expert on the IPMC to respond to that.
Yeah, Councilmember Christensen, you're exactly right. The property maintenance code is very general. The, the code sections I wrote up most commonly say things like the electrical system must be properly installed and maintained in a safe working order. That kind of stuff. And it's meant to work with the other building codes that we have, and the way those work is, so the new codes apply to new construction, the older buildings are meant to be in compliance with the code from the time it was built. So sometimes we have to do a bit of research to see if what we're seeing out there is a violation, but it's, it's kind of through that method. It's, it's very general in the IPMC, and we kind of go through the whole history.
Thank you. I did see that your virtual hand was up, Senior and Code Enforcement Officer Hermsen. Was there anything else you would like to add to that?
No, it was, it was just to respond to Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you. Councilmember Christensen.
I forgot to add. I really, I, I agree with Councilwoman Martin that I believe that all short and long-term rentals, whether they're apartments or ADUs or houses should be part of this because in my experience of twenty years of renting, when I lived in houses, there are, first of all, there are more people living in a house and more people who could be damaged. And also, houses tend to be older, and they tend to have more things wrong with them, and they tend to cause more damage to the people living in them. And, and as Councilwoman Norton pointed out, to the neighbors who have no way to complain when there's, there's a house that is not, it's not up to snuff, so to speak. So I would really like to see something happening here on all short and long-term rentals, ADUs and houses that are eight years old or greater.
All right, thank you. Harold, would you like to add something?
I actually wanted to go back to the first question regarding the rate. I think that there's any number of ways you can do that. And, and so obviously, you know, if you add some of these other components, that's going to drive the cost up. I've talked to some council members about this. And so in terms of how you set that, some of the base questions are going to, that are going to come from us is, if council wanted to do this, do you want it to be fully supported via fees and licenses? Or do you want to offset that expense with general fund dollars, knowing that that's then going to have other impacts in the process? And so depending on how you set that structure in terms of the rates and what you want to charge, that's then going to indicate how much money you have to pull in and, and into the point of, if you, if you say, no, we want to recover it all through the process, then we have to figure out from a financial perspective, if the program's going to cost you three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars, you have to collect the three or four hundred thousand dollars on an annual basis to ensure that you're funding it, which may mean that if you're getting, just to be completely transparent, if you're only able to get a quarter of the, the units in on an annual basis, then you have to allocate that cost to the amount of units that you're going to be able to inspect. And so depending on how it's structured, there could be any number of ways that you create the rate structure for it. There's going to be a lot of questions that we will have to go over with council if council decides to to head down that path in terms of how you set those rates.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Waters, please.
The Councilmember Peck was in front of me in the queue. I'll, I'll follow her.
All right, it is about a dead heat on that one, but go ahead, Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Councilman Waters. I think when I made this motion a couple of weeks ago, I, I actually asked, and I know it's too soon to get this information, what the rate structure would have to be if it was, if it paid for itself. So I'm curious to know what that rate structure would have to be. Also, do we have any idea about the cities that you've contacted? Is this a self-sustaining program, or does their general fund have to backfill it as well? And I think that would determine some of our rates, to see what other cities.
No, that wasn't a specific question that we asked, but we could follow up. Yeah, some, some of the cities actually backfill with private consulting too, where they require the landowner to hire their own inspector that is certified by the city. So there are a lot of different looks to what the model looks like.
Okay, so I do have a couple of other questions. We are on a complaint basis. What happens if the landlord, the apartment building, whatever the residence is, is not in compliance and refuses to come into compliance? How, how does that work?
Sure, yeah. I'll, I'll turn it over to Dane.
Councilmember Peck, so our processes will give them a notice with a reasonable timeline to complete repairs, which is what the code requires, and that depends on kind of how much work they have to do, how difficult it is to find the expert they need. If they refuse to comply, which I don't think I've ever had happen, we would start probably just issuing fines, which the first one's a hundred dollars, second one's two hundred, everyone after that is five hundred. And they go as liens on the property, so they are going to have an effect.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and let's see, I think I had one more. Oh, Dane, this is probably for you and Glenn. Are you the only inspector that we have in this city? Would we have to hire more? Or how does that work?
Yeah, we, Councilmember Peck, we would probably need more people to do the license inspections. I, I wouldn't be able to handle them all on my own. I am right now the only person that does substandard housing inspections. I work quite a lot with the building inspectors, but I'm the only one specifically doing this job.
Okay, thank you. My next comment is actually to the residents, if they're watching and who are complaining about this process. I brought this forward because I had gone on some neighborhood walks with Chief Butler and Dan Benavides in the past. And the sixty complaints are only those that were made to the city. We, I had gone into buildings where the washing machines in the community buildings didn't work, and were actually flooding. Out of three, there was only one that was working. And in one gentleman's apartment, a couple of burners on his stove didn't work. I asked why he didn't call in, and he said he was very much afraid to call in for fear that the cost of that would be put on his rent and that he wouldn't be able to live, he would have no other place to live because he didn't have the, the ability to pay a higher rent or even to pay for the repair of the stove. So that was just one example. But as a landlord myself, for, just in defense of landlords, some people who rent are not, let's say, caring about the property. We've had kitty litter thrown down the toilet, paper towels in the garbage disposals with huge repair bills. It was so nice to have that inspection and saying, this was all working when you rented it. We've had an inspection, so it kind of cuts that conversation and, and upholds the renter, the landlord's position as well. So for me, on council, this is not about one side or the other. It is about having equity in our, in our city and that we're not having marginalized part of our community afraid to call in for fear and complain for fear they would lose their housing. So I just wanted that to go out to the residents as examples of why I feel this is important. I do agree that we should have all houses as well, res, single-family residents that are rented as part of the inspection process. And the eight years, I think, is, is a good base model for anything eight years or older. So to be inspected and licensed.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Waters was next. And then just to let people know, I saw hands from Councilmember Christensen, Councilmember Martin, and Councilmember Dogafaring now just recently.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. I'm, I'm less persuaded that, that we have, I'm not even certain. I mean, I, I appreciate what I just heard from Councilmember Peck, both in the interest of landlords and of, of tenants. But I just don't have a, a sense of the scope and breadth of the problem, apparently like other council members do, because I have not heard from renters. I, I've, I've heard from a couple of landlords, but we probably have all heard from them in terms of email correspondence and those who are not pleased about this. But I do, I, I didn't realize that our complaint-based approach was broken. What I hear repeatedly is what, and I know what great work Susan Spalding and her team do. I'm somewhat familiar with the Landlord Alliance, the work that our community service has done, has, has done with landlords on Section Eight vouchers and in all of trying to get people housed. So I, I don't know what, what, whatever problems might be associated with implementing the kind of plan, the breadth and scope to be determined that Glenn laid out here, whether or not, whether or not the new problems we would be dealing with in terms of enforcement are better or worse than the problems that we're now solving with the approach, the complaint-based approach that we have. But I, but I, there's some questions, Glenn, not that I would expect you to answer tonight, but if we're going to, if the staff, or if the council gives direction to the staff to bring something back, I would like to know from the, the, the other municipalities that, that, that are, that have moved forward with this, that are implementing a program, what were the problems they were trying to solve, and to what degree did their approach solve those problems? What were the new problems that they're dealing with that we ought to be able to anticipate? I'd like to, to learn a lot more about what the, the actual costs are going to be. I'm not the only one. Everybody, you know, has mentioned costs. But we just went through a conversation about raising utility rates, which we are clearly going to do to some level going into 2021. And now we're talking about raising costs for somebody which no doubt are going to be passed along to renters. I don't know what those are going to be. I've heard from Councilmember Christensen that they'll be minimal. I asked Harold what the implications of this would be for LHA. And Harold's response was a little unsettling. The costs as laid out in this proposal or in this plan without a lot of specificity, specificity are pretty significant. And there is no doubt those costs are going to be transferred, transferred right to the, to our renters. So on a scale of one to ten, I asked Harold, with ten being the worst in terms of poor facilities and poor response and health and safety concerns and those kinds of things, where would LHA fall? Harold's response was be as, at a one or zero. I mean, we are immediately responsive. We maintain the facilities. And yet, all the costs we're talking about creating will have to ultimately be paid by LHA residents. In a town where we keep talking about, we're trying to keep costs for homeownership or, or rental units down, now we're talking about increasing them. And if we're going to do that, I just would like to know we're going to do it with benefits commensurate to whatever those costs are. Because I know who's going to end up, end up paying them. Beyond that, we're talking about creating, it sounds like a program that's going to be, have fairly significant implications for code enforcement, planning and code enforcement. And I sat down this afternoon to just make a list of what I, what have we done? What have we created since, just in the time I've been on the council, since 2018, as fairly significant projects that, not all of which the council directed, but, but, but have been created for a staff that is currently implementing. And here's, here's the shortlist. The first and main transportation hub, planning, financing, what that is going to require. We are trying to manage the projects being implemented as a result of the 2018 bond election with spiraling costs. It looks to me, and I think to the staff, like there was not enough money in that bond to cover all that we were trying to get done. So we have staff scrambling with, with, with project management and construction management on the facilities currently underway and problems be solved with the fire stations and the recreation facilities, et cetera. The adaptation of the Sustainability Evaluation System and its implementation. The Climate Action Task Force Resolution and Recommendations. Costco and its economic benefits to the city, but with implications for finance. Public Works Housing Attorney, the City Manager. Quiet Zones. Longmont Housing Authority, which we have assumed, right? We've taken over in the interest of our residents to keep their costs down and to offer, maintain quality housing. The updates on short-term rentals, accessory dwelling units and RV ordinances. Two feasibility studies. Updates to our land code with specific intention to design standards. The Stream, Steam and Main Street Vision Projects. And we're going to talk about the breadth and scope of the Main Street Court, Main Street Corridor Plan later to, on this agenda, which is, you know, pretty dramatic in scope. Wildlife Management Plan and Protection of Our Repairing Corridors. The Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. Where the hard work is in the implementation, much beyond the time that the staff spent just to, to get us the ordinance. Medical marijuana, both licensing and, and delivery. Multimodal plans with specific attention to bike lanes. Button Rock Management Plan, windy gap, chimney hollows. The planning and litigation that goes along with that. Not to mention Prairie Dogs. And all of that happening in the context of a once-in-a-century pandemic. And all of the personnel, financial management, facilities management challenges that go along with that. My point is, if we're going to do this, we ought to take a hard look at this list and decide which of the things that we've created on this list come off the list. To add one more major thing, in addition to what we've already done, to a staff that is stretched pretty thin right now, seems to me to be irresponsible if we're not willing to say there's some abandonment we need to do. This is more important. Whatever we're talking about doing with, with rental licensing has to be more important than what's on the list. If we're going to add it to the list, we ought to take something off. Now, I got a bunch of other questions about costs, benefits, how we would evaluate the effects of our ordinance, how other municipalities have evaluated the effects of theirs if we go farther with this. But I'm telling you, this feels like a huge, huge hammer for, I'm not certain how big of a nail. And I, I'd like more information, more evidence of the magnitude of the problem before I'm going to get behind a program that's going to create costs for our residents and another significant burden for the staff. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Waters. Just a reminder, the speaking order is still. Councilmember Christensen next, Councilmember Martin, then Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring. I encourage anybody to go beyond opining and make a motion. Otherwise, I mean, I will make a motion after this next three speakers. So, Councilmember Christians.
Thank you, Mayor Pro-Tim. I will make a motion. I think there are, for, to hire two more extra people and to actually understand the cost, the problems with our housing. When we are in the midst of a huge housing crisis, fifty-eight percent of the people renting cannot afford to rent. They at least deserve to have safe and decent housing. And it's up to us as the people who are doing this to, who are in charge of policy, to be sure that the residents of the city have safe and decent housing. I don't, there's nothing really more important to me than that the residents have a safe and decent city to live in. So I think three hundred thousand dollars that can be factored out with, which if it's forty dollars for an inspection a year, every two years, that would be about two dollars a month. I, I think people can afford that. Plus, this is tax deductible for the landlord. They don't need to pass this on to the tenant at all. Anyway, I, I really think this is extremely important that we have a database, that we know what's going on here, that we have licenses. Many, many cities this size have done this since the fifties. I mean, this is not, this is not a new thing. We've just been ignoring it for a very long time. And we need to not ignore it anymore because for the last eight years, I have gotten lots and lots and lots of complaints about housing. About from, about landlords and also about houses that are not being taken care of by my neighbors. And so they don't complain to their landlord because they're afraid of losing their house. They complain to everybody else, but they, they don't complain because they're afraid that they'll be thrown out. So I don't think it's just sixty complaints a year. That's the problem of having it be something that has to go through time that a tenant has to take off, to go through meetings, time that a tenant has to go off, them filing paperwork, and the fear that a tenant has when they're not being taken care of. And as Councilwoman Peck said, this upholds the landlord's ability to say, you know, when you moved in, everything was working fine. Now I am spending a small fortune to repair this and this and this. So clearly, you've done something that is costing money. So I would move that we move forward with this. I would, I would move forward, I would direct staff, I'm sorry, to bring forth an ordinance in which we decide what kind of housing would be attached and what the schedule for inspections would be. I think if we put it off for every three years, we could, it would cost less. And rough expenses for what that would be. I think Mr. Van Mienvegen gave us some pretty, pretty fair assessments of how much this would cost for both the inspection and the license. I would expect the license and the inspection to be as the very least that we can charge and still make this at least partially self-financing. So, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor that directs staff to bring forward an ordinance with, to paraphrase, definitive measurables, many of which were outlined by Councilmember Christensen. I think there are many that council would like to hear. For the sake of the speaking order, I would still like to continue on with who I have in the queue. And because we have now have a motion and a second, if we can try to limit our questions and opinions to the motion, that would be helpful as well, please. So at this time, Councilmember Martin.
Yes, thank you. First, I would like to say to the public, landlords and tenants, that as Councilmember Peck pointed out, this is for all of you, but, but for the, for, for the persons that I think are most at risk. I spend about two hours a day doing direct outreach to residents, most of whom are renters. And I hear over and over and over again that they are afraid to complain to their landlords. And I, there was a really clear-cut sort of, of divide between low-income residents who do not have good relations with their landlords and maybe they're afraid because they're late with the rent sometimes, you know? And their landlord thinks maybe they can do better the next time. And then, you know, af- more affluent or at least more comfortable, secure renters have perfectly fine relationships with their landlords. And actually, that's the experience that I have as a person who has been up and down in terms of my, my personal fortunes. When I was down, I had trouble with my landlords. And when I wasn't down, it was all just fine. And I'm not very scared of confronting landlords, so I suspect it's worse for a lot of people. But to address Councilmember Waters' concerns, I think, first of all, that this is not the scale of many of the other initiatives that he was comparing it to. And second, that this is a matter of infrastructure like potholes and sidewalks and streetlights. You know, it is something that a city does as base-level operations. And our city hasn't done it, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it would not achieve economies if it did do it. And that landlords wouldn't. You know, the, the good landlords that I talked to, they said, well, you know, I make sure that I maintain my properties every couple of years, no matter what, because if I let it go, it gets old and then the, the costs are higher. So if on the older buildings we inspected and produced lists of needed repairs, it would probably end up in the long term, saving landlords who tend to put things off money. I also think that we are in a housing crisis and that the inventory of housing stock that we would develop by licensing rentals, that would, it would tell us things that we don't know now, like the density of rental properties in different neighborhoods and the condition of our rental properties and, you know, and many other things. You know, we've, all of us complained at one time or another that when we're talking about affordable housing, we're not really sure what we've got. And we, you know, we hear a lot about the need, but it's very hard to quantify. So I, I really like the idea of anything that is going to help us quantify it. And then that's why I believe that we should continue in this assessment. I don't know whether a friendly amendment is needed or not. Councilmember Christensen, you can talk about that. We may, we may not be yet in a position to go straight to an ordinance. And I could see this happening as several incremental ordinances. Any, you know, just to make sure that we get it right, but to make a start on it, that it be in, be the initiative. So that is just my opinion. We could implement something basic as an ordinance immediately. And if, it sounds like that's what Councilmember Christensen would prefer. But, you know, I think this is a necessary beginning.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring.
Okay, thank you. So I did see on one of our options was to direct staff to begin program development to include stakeholder outreach and draft a budget. So I would assume that that would be the first step in the process before we went on to any type of ordinance anyway. So I'm wondering if that would already be in that, in that component. So if that's the case, I don't think it would be necessary to have an amend, an amendment, because that would be the next step in the process is to gather that information and draft the budget. The question I have is around the, you know, for, to collect landlord input on inspection preference. Would they want the city to be providing that? Or would they prefer to have hired their own inspectors? So, you know, I, I think we really need to guide what the overall preference of our landlords are. So I think that should be something that is included in the, in the input. The other thing is, I, I hardly agree with Councilmember Martin, Councilmember Peck and Councilmember Christensen. And, you know, to have these numbers quantified. A large portion of our population rent their home. These are our constituents. So we need to be able to, to have data on what's happening in these places. And, you know, over the year, over several years, because I rent, I rent my home and I've had some great homes and I've had some. There was one home where we lasted three weeks in there. It ended up having, and we bought, we had someone come in and do a mold assessment on the house. It was eighty percent mold. My kids were sick. My husband got really sick. We, we essentially evacuated the home. So in that particular case, that could have been one that would have been resolved through an inspection. And even, you know, you kind of smelled it when you went down into the basement. It kind of had that musty smell. But, you know, our, our kids, we could, more than half my family got really sick. And that one I did, like, like Councilmember Martin, I have no problems going to the landlord and saying, hey. But other, over the years, I've talked to, and it was predominantly low-income, twenty-something, young, you know, just out of, leaving their parents' homes and renting on their own and are lower income and second language learners, where English is not their primary language. Just concerns after concerns. One of the apartment complexes, and this was where my daughter had used, used to live, they actually had bungee cords holding up the stair rail in the apartment. And I think they're recently had gotten it fixed because I said something. And then another apartment that I had spoken with some residents, that the front door going into the complex was broken. So anyone could have access coming into those apartment complexes. Another one, this was a single-family home, gas, the smell of gas. And in all these cases, tenants were afraid to say something. They were afraid that their leases were not going to be renewed. They were afraid that their rent, their rates would go up if they complained, so retribution. So, you know, I have a question, if anybody knows, are there any types of protections? I know we have whistleblower protections for employees. Are there any type of tenant protections if they report something in regard to substandard housing and safety issues? So if there's somebody on, in staff that could... Glenn, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, Mayor Pro-Tim Rodriguez and Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring. Maybe I'll ask Susan, who is, her internet is knocked out by the storm, but she is on the phone. And I think there are a renter bill of rights, but maybe Susan could address that.
I'm here.
Please continue.
Should I talk?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, this, this is, this is Susan. The, the new Warranty of Habitability, which is a state law, does have provisions prohibiting retaliation and has some quite vigorous penalties for retaliation. Of course, retaliation is a state of mind and sometimes it's hard to prove that. But I wanted to address something that Councilwoman Hidalgo Ferring talked about, which is mold. And I don't think that the IPMC or our code officers actually inspect for mold. So that, 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 that is the one issue that I hear the most about.
Yeah.
And it is the one issue that we, we don't have the ability to address through our inspections. Although there is quite a strong law, a state law, requiring landlords to engage with the mold on a strict timeline. That's not something that, at, at present, our, our code officers would address. Can I, can I say a couple of other things?
Please do.
About, okay, I'm not a policy person. Everything I'm talking about is based on anecdote, but believe me, I've heard thousands and thousands of anecdotes. I don't perceive that there's a great fear on the part of tenants. There, of course, there is sometimes, but that would always be the case. But I, I think that what I'd like to see, I, I kind of have this vision. Longmont has, already has the structure set up. We have a strong crime-free program. Um, we have a, a strong crime free program. We have a strong landlord tenant housing retention and mediation program already set up. We have uh the basic setup for what I foresee is we could actually create um a, a mediation centered approach to the landlord tenant relationship. And I, I'm not saying that there's not role for enforcement and not role for litigation, which of course is what Boulder's going down that road. But I really do think that we could, we, we could have a different kind of vision about how to um strengthen uh the, the rental situation and the landlord tenant relationship in our city. Um, I, I, I would like, like to see uh a, a, kind of like a, in an, a housing ombuds office, not just uh rental licensing and we're talking about, when we're talking about this whole rental licensing thing, we're talking about several different things. There's registration, which addresses the database. Uh, a part of that would be having some kind of an agent of record uh on hand for law enforcement and for fire and code. Then we're talking about licensing and then we're talking about inspection. I think those are uh three, four different things, so we, we should keep that in mind that, that it, it doesn't need to encompass all of that. Um, I, I don't, going back to what Councilperson Waters said, I, I'm not sure I know the nature of the problem. I, I, I talk to landlords and tenants all day, every day, and I have for thirteen years. I'm not sure I perceive that there's um a, the, the problem that, I, I don't know. You know, it, to me, it's interesting having this conversation and, and talking about, about this relationship, but I'm not sure. Uh, uh, you know, there's all different kinds of ways we could really think outside of the box. One of the things I was thinking about was what if we had a, a, a forgivable loan program? Where if a landlord had code violations, there could be a, a forgivable loan program through the city where if the landlord upgraded the, the rental, the law and kept the rental at an affordable rate for five years, that, that um the, the loan would be forgiven, like we have for other kind of forgivable loan programs. Uh, there's just other ways, I, I'm thinking we could use the money that would truly benefit tenants. Um, without having, as Councilwoman Waters says, using it, the hu- a huge hammer to pound a, a small nail. Um, anyway. I would like to invite, um, we're, we're going to have um landlord training next week. And I would like to invite uh some council members to come and speak to the landlords and talk to them about this issue, if anybody would like to attend next week.
And that's very similar, Susan, to the one that um Councilmember Peck and I attended prior to the pandemic.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah.
It's the same one, we, we do it every, we do it every month.
Okay, and then, so one thing I did notice is that there weren't very many, if any, um landlords or representation of people of color. And, you know, I just, I'm trying to like, I, I want to look at it from, and so the, a lot of the folks that I spoke to are monolingual Spanish speakers. And so, you know, I, I worry that there's a group of people that are not being included into the conversation. And I just want to make sure they are represented.
And I agree with you, and of course, the landlord training is, is, you know, people, it's not, we're not, it's not invited, anybody can come. When we used to hold them in, in person, we did have various, for instance, Latino landlords attend the trainings. But um true, they're not, they're not held in Spanish. Um, so, and anybody can come, so we're, we're not inviting people by race.
No, I, I, I'm not insinuating that.
Sorry.
Uh, just, just a second, uh, Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring, are you, are you finished with your comments, questions at the moment?
Yeah, I am, I am, that's all.
Okay, Harold, real quick.
I want to get dogs acting up behind me, sorry.
Okay, well, lem- let me just uh let everybody know, right now I have, uh, I'm going to speak because I haven't spoken on the topic yet, uh, but after I speak, if there are some, some chime in from staff, that's fine. But Councilmember Waters, Councilmember Peck and Councilmember Martin, in that order, I've seen your hands. So, uh, I just want to say, um, right now for me, the current motion on, on the table i- is a bit premature. Um, I think it's been mentioned by various council members that there's been some items that were not in the packet that need to be explored further before we get to a point of really talking and getting into the nitty gritty of an ordinance. Another thing for me is the uncertainty still of where we are economically. I know we are getting closer to open and some sort of concept of normalcy. But when all of the various um executive orders concerning moratoriums and, and be it rent forgiveness or rent assistance programs, when all those things start to come to a head, what is our housing situation really going to look like then? Because would it, as, as, I don't know, anybody that has been paying attention to what our, our real estate values are like in this area, who's to stop any of these, these landlords from just cashing out and saying, hey, you know, I bought this house for a hundred thousand dollars in nineteen ninety-eight, but I can get five hundred thousand dollars for it now, you know? So we, we need to keep that in mind in the sense of we don't know what this market's going to continue to look like over the next few months, or whether there's going to be another upsurge in COVID when it gets cold again. We don't know these things, um, so adding this kind of program at this time, to me, there's just too much uncertainty involved. Uh, I would, I'm happy and, and actually interested in the program if, if I felt that we had more certainty with our housing market and what that looked like at this time. Uh, and also with the fact that we have so many unanswered questions. For instance, I thought that Susan just brought up a really great concept about, say, a housing office that doesn't just deal with rental licenses. I'm like, okay, that's a really good idea, that wasn't explored necessarily. Um, uh, so those are just my concepts. Uh, so I'd be interested in continuing to do the research. Uh, for instance, why did Lakewood get rid of theirs in twenty fifteen? You know, we heard why they enacted in two thousand nine based on concerns around foreclosure. But in twenty fifteen, they, they, they scuttled the program. I didn't really get that in, in the uh packet on why exactly they did that. And the various different programs we see from around the state. Um, I definitely could do my own research into that at the same time, don't get me wrong. But I just feel that there's so many questions right now that I'm not quite comfortable moving forward this quickly. I'd rather see more research taken place. And I know we're just going to hear noise about how we just like to do studies and, and spend money to rubber stamp things. I saw that statement made by somebody in, in social media. That's not my concern, it's not so much the studies. It's that I am just not comfortable at where we are at this place in time economically to add a three hundred thousand dollar program, whether it's paid off at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, depending on which units we actually bring into the fold at a certain, you know, rental licensing fee. I just, there, there's just too much, too many moving parts for me to be comfortable with this moving forward with the motion on the table. Uh, as again I said, I'd be happy to move forward with exploring the option as we get more certainty. As such, I'll move on with what I said was the speaking order. So that will be Councilmember Waters, Councilmember Peck, Councilmember Martin, and then Councilmember Christensen now. And then after that, yes, sir.
Go ahead, I, I didn't need to cut you off.
At which point, after Councilmember Christensen, we will ideally take the vote on the motion on the table, is what I was just saying. Councilmember Waters, it's your floor.
Uh, thanks, I'm going to vote against the motion that was, that it's on the floor. Um, because I, I also think it's premature, I, there's uh, there's, there's, there's so much we need to learn and I appreciate, I appreciate Susan and her work, but I really appreciate Susan's willingness to speak truth to power here in this, you know, in a public forum. Um, of all the people in this conversation, she knows more about the problem beyond, even, even she offered that it's anecdotes, although she has thousands of them. I don't know how many anecdotes members of the council have. Um, but, but it sure sounds like uh that we know more than Susan does about the magnitude of the problem. And I just, I, I don't think that could possibly be true. And I don't think we've explored the range of options or the, or creative approaches. In it, in, in an ordinance feels like the hammer, uh proverbial hammer, looking for a nail to hit. And um, and I, and I, to, to start down the path of an ordinance and not know what the, the poten- we can say that it's not going to cost a lot to, to renters. I'd like to see some data, right? Statements without evidence or statements without data to back them up are nothing more than statements. And I'd like to see something, if we're going to, if we're serious about this. And I, I will come back to, to add this, it, it, and our, and if we're unwilling to have conversations about what we take off the agenda for the staff, especially given what we're going to talk about next in terms of the Main Street corridor, it's the same people. We ask, we, we, we give the assignments to the same staff, different projects, but every Tuesday or Tuesday night after Tuesday night. Um, and it, so I'm voting against it for the reasons I've, I've shared. And uh, I think we ought to, I think we ought to reject this motion and talk about other more creative approaches. Under, get, we have a lot to learn before we're ready to start giving direction on, on ordinances, in my opinion.
Thank you, Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, I guess that I misinterpreted this motion. It did not have to do with an ordinance, and I think that was mentioned a couple of times. This is more about continuing the process of looking into, and, and uh Councilwoman Christensen, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't think this was about an ordinance. I totally appreciate Susan Spalding and have talked to her two or three times um about renters. However, I do want the process to continue to do research, to find information about what's going on um and where we can go with this. I think that the mediation should always be there, it should never go away. That is the first step of any kind of a renter or landlord conflict. And I, I, for me, this is about equity as well. We can't just talk about that, we have to walk the walk. And if our housing is not up to date, uh, as far as code goes um with some of these things that are going wrong, and some of them are not anecdotal, Councilman Waters. Um, so I, I want the motion to be clarified. I did not interpret it as an ordinance at all, we are not ready for an ordinance. So uh, Mayor Pro Tem, can you clarify that motion, please?
Yes, uh, as I understood it, the word ordinance was included in the motion. I had it as a direction for staff to bring forward an ordinance with definitive measurables. And I paraphrased the definitive measurables portion because it was very specific, according to Councilmember Christensen, as far as safety measures and things like that. And I didn't necessarily want to repeat a, a litany uh of items on a list. But it, it was specific to bringing forward an ordinance, as far as I remember, and the notes that I've made here. Um, I'm sure that our clerk could correct me if wrong.
And, and if that was it, I, I won't vote for an ordinance at this point either, but then I will also make a motion. Um, unless Councilwoman Christensen wants to change the motion to continue the process of uh gathering information and how we can have, what are some of our other ways out of the box to approach this?
Okay, thank you, uh, seeing nobody else's hand up besides just continuing in order. Uh, as, and as I stated, after Councilmember Christensen, we will be either moving to vote on this motion or we will be withdrawing and making another motion, just to let you know, Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring, because we've gone around the horn, uh, if you will. So Councilmember Martin and then Councilmember Christensen, and then I, I'm going to call the question.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, and I, I do agree with Councilmember Peck, I suggested it once. Uh, but having seconded the motion, I, you know, I sort of realized belatedly that we were go- going too fast toward an ordinance. Um, because I, I do think we need more um understanding of where we're going. Um, I do want to point out a couple of things. One is that we have a, a deep misunderstanding of scale here. You know, we either believe Mr. Van Nemwegen that this is a three hundred thousand dollar a year program, uh, or we don't. And we should know more if we, if we have this big a disconnect. Um, uh, Ms. Spalding also um mentioned that, you know, we could use, we could have a loan forgiveness program instead of this program. And, and I can't imagine doing a loan forgiveness program that would only cost three hundred thousand dollars a year and be funded by fees. So, um, while I have huge respect for her and have talked to her on several occasions about uh the ombudna- but ombudment program and in fact, talked to the, the landlord informants that I had running up to this discussion. Um, I never saw that as an alternative to an inventory and inspection program. I think that that, that program, uh, as, as she has described it to me, would be an asset to the community. In, in fact, it was on my wish list of things that I thought we would put in the budget um in, in this year and, or next year and the year after that, probably to get it up full bore. But I don't see that as an, as an um, an alternative. Uh, and then finally, on the subject of whether people are scared of their landlords or not. Um, again, I, you know, Susan sees the ones that aren't scared. And, and she does very well with them and is universally admired among the public who are in precarious positions with regard to their housing. But there's a whole layer of people who will not come forward, and, and I talk to them every day. So I would be much more comfortable if we voted to continue rather than, um, rather than to call for an ordinance.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin, Councilmember Christensen, please.
Okay, yes, I do want an ordinance. We've discussed this at City Council for about eight years and no one has had the courage to actually turn this into an ordinance. Tonight, we have scattered this discussion into every single thing other than simple licensure for fifty, fifty dollars a year and every three-year inspection for anything over eight years for forty dollars an inspection. That's a very simple thing, can, that's what I wanted to explore and bring forward. And that in itself has different thing, different things that we can do to temper it between landlords and tenants and our costs and whatever. That's a very simple ordinance, licensure and inspections. Every three years for houses or anything, anything that rents in this town that is over eight years old. That's all I'm asking for, is to bring forth something, and that would require several months of discussion anyway for an ordinance. That's what I'm still um asking for people to vote on, vote up or vote down, but have the courage to vote.
All right, uh, the motion is still on the table and we've gone around the proverbial dais or the virtual dais, if you will, and as such, I'm going to call the vote. Uh, Harold, real quick, I guess, before we vote.
Well, I guess depending on the vote, I'm going to have some questions afterwards in terms of getting some specificity.
Absolutely. So the motion on the table is to direct staff to bring forward an ordinance uh with, as I called it, definitive measurables that brings forward a rental licensing and inspections, because Councilmember Christensen just made that abundantly clear. And direct direct staff to bring that forward. As such, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. The motion passes with Councilmember Christensen, Councilmember Peck, Councilmember Idolga Ferring, Councilmember Martin for, and Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez and Councilmember Waters against. Harold, did you have some more questions?
As we look at this to bring it forward, I have a few questions. Do we want to include detached homes in this?
So we can go around and make these individualistic motions. I'm just wondering if, as normally the ordinances come forward to council, we get the options in a study session with, you know, with an ordinance that's ability to be redlined instead of going around the horn again with every single item. Is that possible?
Yeah, it is. I just, you know, there's going to be a lot of options on this to give you a sense of what we're looking at. And and we can do that. We may need to go into zero reading on this. But
I have no doubt that's what's going to happen, so.
Because there's questions on, and just to give you a sense of what I was going to ask is detached homes, yea or nay? General fund dollars supporting it, yea or nay? Community involvement process, yea or, you know? Those are all questions that we've got to get answered because it can make a fairly tangible difference in the numbers both way, you know, in in all directions. And then really diving into the what in in more detail may also help too.
And so based on whatever operationally needs to be done to accomplish this in the most logical and efficient way, be it a zero session, as you you called it, I think that would be the next step.
Okay.
Because I don't think that we're going to be efficient in making those recommendations tonight.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you. So if everybody doesn't mind, the chair needs a biological break. So we're going to take a quick five minutes and we'll be right back to carry on with our agenda. Thank you.
land use, transportation, history, public realm and green infrastructure, as well as market incentives. The plan also does provide some detailed guidance on recommended code updates that we would like to undertake. Staff continues to work on implementation in many of these areas. So we continue to work with Public Works, CDOT and RTD on transportation projects and opportunities. A good example, as council knows, we're in the midst of planning for the Kaufman Street Busway, which was a major project that supports the Main Street Corridor Plan vision. We've recently also been working on drafting budget and CIP requests to continue plan implementation, particularly in the areas of transportation, public realm and green infrastructure. We provided a short summary in your packet for this discussion item, but council will also see this information in more detailed form later this year as part of your budget discussions. Tonight, what we really wanted to focus on were the market incentive pieces that were identified in the plan. We haven't talked much with council about that. Council will recall that there were a number of overarching goals included for the corridor within the plan. One of these was to promote economic growth by attracting and retaining a diverse range of businesses and housing to strengthen the corridor while preventing displacement of existing businesses and homes. And it's important to call out this last piece because I know that's something council has talked about. And so the plan does provide a number of recommendations on strategies we might use to ensure that this does remain a vibrant part of the corridor, both for new businesses, but also for the folks that are there making it a great place today. So the plan that council accepted in 2019 identified a number of recommendations to support this overarching goal around economic development and vitality. And those were really in four areas, providing support for businesses within the corridor, again, both new and existing, leveraging opportunity in enterprise zone designations, encouraging reinvestments through business incentives, and exploring tax increment financing or TIF through urban renewal. And Tony will talk a little bit more about that. During the last year, as you can imagine, much of our efforts around business support in the corridor were targeted to pandemic relief. And we did assist a number of businesses throughout the corridor, but we're really excited to get back to generally supporting the recommendations and plan implementation a bit more. For example, we've initiated early discussions with the city's Sustainable Business Program, the Longmont Area Chamber of Commerce and other advanced long-mot partners on ways we can support the businesses within the corridor, particularly those businesses outside the DDA where we already have a structure for business support in existence. So the plan does contain some specific recommendations on exploring the formation of business associations or even formalized stakeholder groups, particularly within the midtown and North Main character areas. So we'll be working towards that. We continue to work with the Longmont Economic Development Partnership to leverage the enterprise and opportunity zone designations as much of the corridor study area does fall within these areas. As a reminder, the Longmont Opportunity Zones are two census tracts run from Ninth Avenue down to the river and are on both sides of Main Street, so covering a fairly good portion of the downtown character area as well as some of the the South Main area. And then the enterprise zone covers the majority of the corridor study area, really running from Highway 66 on the north down to the river and Quail Road with with a few gaps here and there, but it does cover a majority of the of the study area. The plan contains specific information on funding and financing tools. The majority of the strategies and tools in the plan, I do want to note, are really things that the city can do to support continued investment, such as investing in public spaces, investing in utility and infrastructure improvement, as well as other public types of improvement. But there are also a number of district sources and partnership that the plan explores, such as urban renewal. So within specific areas of the corridor, particularly like in midtown and North Main, the plan recommends exploring the creation of urban renewal to support redevelopment revitalization. So with that, I want to turn it over to Tony to discuss some of these targeted district funding options that are available to support investment and revitalization, again, particularly in midtown and North Main. And I'll be available to answer general questions as well. Tony?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez, members of council, Tony Chacon, redevelopment manager. What I'd like to just address are a few funding mechanisms that really promote public-private partnerships. And those have been identified in the Main Street Plan as real opportunities to pursue because the private sector can bring a lot more money to the table than maybe what we can through the general city funding that we have out there. So the first mechanism, just to advise, that is available in that particular area. It could encompass large areas along the corridor, particularly the north part of Main Street, or it could be a more defined area or areas. But just to advise, as of right now, along Main Street, we do have one large urban renewal area that covers that area effectively from St. Brain Creek up to about Second Avenue. Then we also have a Downtown Development Authority District, which, just to advise, that they actually have a mill levy tax against the properties that helps generate money that they can use as investment in that downtown area and help businesses promote themselves. So back to the urban renewal. Again, there are opportunities on the north end, we believe. There are certain rules as to the creation of those districts. Effectively, they have to meet certain conditions of what the state considers blight. And let me just tell you, when they refer to blight, it is mostly, it is about the physical conditions of the area. It has nothing to do about the demographics or the economics of that particular area there. So it's purely about the physical aspects. Upon finding barrier or meeting the criteria, you can then create urban renewal districts. And then within those urban renewal districts, you can create subareas, which would be the tax increment areas. Just to let you know, urban renewal, creation of an urban renewal district does not impose additional taxes on the properties. It works exclusively with the tax revenues that are generated from the other public entities that, in fact, do collect taxes in that particular area. So there's a lot of confusion as to whether they have the ability to impose new property taxes and their fees. Under state law, they cannot do that. They work exclusively with the existing taxes that are generated. And what the TIF is, is actually the the new tax revenue generated from the reinvestment and development in those TIF areas, not not necessarily the entire urban renewal area, but the TIF area. A couple of other mechanisms we have identified that council, we felt it would be advisable to let you know what they might be. They are both actually taxing entities. One is a business improvement district and the other one being a general improvement district. In that capacity, they are defined geographic areas. They do impose a mill levy on the properties within those areas there. They can impose fees. And then they have various voting requirements. So the city can't just go establish a business improvement district or GID without a vote of the various eligible voters in those areas there. So that one, those two are a little more challenging because, again, you do have to get effectively a majority of the eligible voters to agree to create these districts and then effectively take on debt to make any improvements or provide any support for that community. So those are the three mechanisms we wanted to point out to you, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that might you may have. One other item back to the urban renewal districts, I did forget. I can tell you, we have had several development interests approach us about developing in the north quarter, but it is extremely challenging for them to make the numbers work, to get the development done. And they have actually inquired about the possibility of work in in conjunction with an urban renewal district. So I just wanted to put that on the table also. Thank you.
All righty, thank you, Tony. Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. And thank you, Aaron and Tony, for your answering my questions before this meeting. I really appreciate it. And you brought up what I was concerned about. So my other concern is the oh, shoot, I just lost the, I just lost the word, is about the opportunity zones. When I look at the map of where the opportunity zones are, it is a bit concerning in the fact that they extend into residential areas. When, and I am, I'm just going to present what I heard at the National League of Cities a couple of years ago, when Ben Carson, one of my favorite people who was in charge of HUD, was really patting himself on the back, is that he came in
as well as some of the the South Main area. And then the enterprise zone covers the majority of the corridor study area, really running from Highway 66 on the north down to the river and Quail Road with with a few gaps here and there, but it does cover a majority of the of the study area. The plan contains specific information on funding and financing tools. The majority of the strategies and tools in the plan, I do want to note, are really things that the city can do to support continued investment, such as investing in public spaces, investing in utility and infrastructure improvement, as well as other public types of improvement. But there are also a number of district sources and partnership that the plan explores, such as urban renewal. So within specific areas of the corridor, particularly like in midtown and North Main, the plan recommends exploring the creation of urban renewal to support redevelopment revitalization. So with that, I want to turn it over to Tony to discuss some of these targeted district funding options that are available to support investment and revitalization, again, particularly in midtown and North Main. And I'll be available to answer general questions as well. Tony?
Yes, Mayor Protim Rodriguez, members of council, Tony Chacon, redevelopment manager. What I'd like to just address are a few funding mechanisms that really promote public-private partnerships. And those have been identified in the Main Street Plan as real opportunities to pursue because the private sector can bring a lot more money to the table than maybe what we can through the general city funding that we have out there. So the first mechanism, just to advise, that is available in that particular area. It could encompass large areas along the corridor, particularly the north part of Main Street, or it could be a more defined area or areas. But just to advise, as of right now, along Main Street, we do have one large urban renewal area that covers that area effectively from St. Brain Creek up to about Second Avenue. Then we also have a Downtown Development Authority District, which, just to advise, that they actually have a mill levy tax against the properties that helps generate money that they can use as investment in that downtown area and help businesses promote themselves. So back to the urban renewal, again, there are opportunities on the north end, we believe. There are certain rules as to the creation of those districts. Effectively, they have to meet certain conditions of what the state considers blight. And let me just tell you, when they refer to blight, it is mostly, it is about the physical conditions of the area. It has nothing to do about the demographics or the economics of that particular area there. So it's purely about the physical aspects. Upon finding barrier or meeting the criteria, you can then create urban renewal districts. And then within those urban renewal districts, you can create subareas, which would be the tax increment areas. Just to let you know, urban renewal, creation of an urban renewal district does not impose additional taxes on the properties. It works exclusively with the tax revenues that are generated from the other public entities that in fact do collect taxes in that particular area. So there's a lot of confusion as to whether they have the ability to impose new property taxes and their fees. Under state law, they cannot do that. They work exclusively with the existing taxes that are generated. And what the TIF is, is actually the the new tax revenue generated from the reinvestment and development in those TIF areas, not necessarily the entire urban renewal area, but the TIF area. A couple of other mechanisms we have identified that council, we felt it would be advisable to let you know what they might be. They are both actually taxing entities. One is a Business Improvement District, and the other one being a General Improvement District. In that capacity, they are defined geographic areas. They do impose a mill levy on the properties within those areas there. They can impose fees. And then they have various voting requirements. So the city can't just go establish a Business Improvement District or a GID without a vote of the various eligible voters in those areas there. So that one, those two are a little more challenging because again, you do have to get effectively a majority of the eligible voters to agree to create these districts and then effectively take on debt to make any improvements or provide any support for that community. So those are the three mechanisms we wanted to point out to you, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that might you may have. One other item back to the urban renewal districts, I did forget. I can tell you, we have had several development interests approach us about developing in the north quarter. But it is extremely challenging for them to make the numbers work, to get the development done. And they have actually inquired about the possibility of working in conjunction with an urban renewal district. So I just wanted to put that on the table also. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you, Tony. Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Protim, and thank you, Erin and Tony, for your answering my questions before this meeting. I really appreciate it. And you brought up what I was concerned about. So my other concern is the oh, shoot, I just lost the, I just lost the word, is about the opportunity zones. When I look at the map of where the opportunity zones are, it is a bit concerning in the fact that they extend into residential areas. When, and I am, I'm just going to present what I heard at the National League of Cities a couple of years ago, when Ben Carson, one of my favorite people who was in charge of HUD, was really patting himself on the back, is that he came into an area that was low-income ethnic and and they decided, whoever the developers were, that this was going to be a blighted area, took out those homes which were affordable and put in a private school, some other high-end development. And I'm very concerned that, I don't know if we do this by code or what we do to protect our residential areas from not being turned into opportunities for developers, even though those opportunities might have a huge economic effect positively on the city. We need to protect our residents, and I don't know how to do that. I just want to bring that to the attention of our staff, that the opportunity zones make me very nervous. I totally agree with the opportunity zones around the Sugar Mill and other commercial areas and our 287, North 287. I think that's a perfect area. But I am very concerned when I look at the map for the opportunity zones of our city that we don't encroach upon our our housing. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you. I totally approve of this whole presentation and I'm excited about what you're doing and where it can go.
If I can answer that question, I think part of the challenge with both the enterprise and the opportunity zones is that they were done by census tract. So it did grab these other areas. And I think the way that you know, we're going to have to look at that is really through our zoning and how you approach it, because if it's own single-family residential, that's probably going to be the mechanism that we're going to have to look at is our zoning process so that you do, can take advantage of it in those more urban areas that you just mentioned. But it was the nature of the way those programs were created at the federal level and that it's by census tract.
The other thing that I would add to that council member Peck is we have worked with the LEDP who is generating prospectus that will sort of highlight different areas within our opportunity zones. And we've been very direct in not including our residential neighborhoods in those specific subareas within the opportunity zone. In other words, we're not highlighting those as the best areas for investment. So there are other areas, as Harold mentioned, that are part of those census tracts that make a lot more sense, and those are the areas we're really focused on.
Thank you for that, Erin, and I do appreciate what staff is doing. I think you're doing an incredible job. But I just want to make sure that was at the top of our intent for what the city wants to be. So thank you for that.
All right, Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. I also want to echo what Councilman Peck said. This is a great, great report and a good reminder of all the the little things all up and down Main Street that we have improved in small ways, but they really make a difference. They build up to make a whole, a much, much better community without destroying it and displacing it, as you've said. I also wanted to echo what she said about the opportunity zones and the enterprise zones. A few years ago, Bruce Katz, who wrote this book, The New Localism: How Cities Can Thrive in the Age of Populism. So Sarah Levinson was taking him on a tour of my neighborhood, I guess, as it which had just been declared blighted by the state for an enterprise zone. And he said, how is this blighted? How much are these houses selling for? I said, you know, the the definition of blighted is kind of, kind of odd. And that and Laura have been problematic for many, many years. But the other thing that concerns me about the opportunity zones in particular is that from what I've studied through Pew Research Center and through Brookings Institute and through National League of Cities and talking to people from different cities through National League of Cities, the opportunity zones are actually very difficult to implement, or the opportunity money is difficult to implement for commercial things. So what people have been doing is buying up real estate, buying up single-family homes, and doing exactly what what was discussed earlier. They just kind of level it and turn it into high-end fancy stuff that none of us can afford. So I'm glad that you're addressing that and that we won't find that happening in Longmont. We do want to be able to do all the things just as you've done them, you know, implementing all these different, great little smaller projects that have a big impact. That makes a huge difference to this town. A lot of people don't even notice these. But in the end, it builds up and it makes this a much, much better town to have all these smaller projects that actually add to the town. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Waters.
Thanks, Mayor Protim. I'll add my appreciation to the to the report, Erin and Tony, and everybody else has worked on it. Nice job. In particular, I appreciate the scoring of the of the, I guess, tasks or, you know, the the list of projects. I'm not certain how to think of them or priorities. The and the color coding, but based the scoring of costs, ease of implementation and in time to implement. If I look at that, and I think of the references now to financing mechanisms and what's going to be, what we'll see in the capital, the CIP budget. Somewhere, Erin, I suspect it's you, and maybe it's you and others, or maybe it's somebody else, but somebody has a, has a project plan here or a project management plan that you've already developed. Is that, or it's in the process of being developed?
Erin, you want to jump in, then I'll jump in.
And listen, the reason I'm asking, I'd like to know, I'm curious about of the work that, of all the work, and it's, it's pretty dramatic. What, what is happening simultaneously in a period of time and the sequencing of tasks? It would help me, and I hope it would help all of us, to see that in relationship to all the other things we ask you to do. But in particular, the timeline, what's simultaneous, what's sequenced over what kind of timeframe for the north, the Main Street Corridor Plan?
Mayor Protim Rodriguez, Councilmember Waters, I'm sure it would be a nightmare for someone using like a project management software to to think how we think about long-range plans. Because as you can imagine, some of those implementation tasks are much longer term. I mentioned that we have been working closely with staff in Public Works and Natural Resources on generating CIP and budget requests. The majority of those are not completely funded or are completely unfunded. And so, as you know, there's difficult prioritization decisions with regard to our budgeting. So yes, a lot of the tasks are more simultaneous, being that we may tackle a portion of the task. You know, the transportation projects are a good example. The Main Street Corridor Plan outlines recommendations for essentially every intersection on Main Street, every kind of section of roadway. And Tyler Stamey and his team have been great at sort of chipping away at that and working with CDOT as opportunities arise for, you know, them to complete projects. But obviously, we can't do the whole five-mile corridor at once. And I anticipate that, you know, as we finish the corridor, then we'll be back to sort of starting on improvements on areas we're working on now. So it is it is simultaneous, but we are focused on certain areas. And one way we do that is through development, you know, obviously, since we have the policy that development pays its own way in Longmont, we are able to achieve some of the improvements recommended by the plan in conjunction with the development that's happening. And so that's one way. We don't always have control of that schedule. So I think we are looking at some of those items that are, you know, kind of the green and the the single dollar sign. Sooner rather than later, we're looking at how can we pair things, you know, for example, with code updates? Are there other code updates that we've been tasked by council to look at? Can we maybe combine some of the recommendations from Main Street with those? Are there other projects that, you know, Public Works or Longmont Power is doing that we can tag on to? It looks like Tony and Harold may have some additional thoughts they want to add.
Go for it, Tony.
Want to go ahead, Harold?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so Councilwoman Waters, just want to advise all council members that the three districts we identified, what they do is any funding that's generated through those districts actually has to be spent in those districts. So what it does is it doesn't then compete with all these other projects across the city for funding. And each of those districts with their various boards and authority, they make the decisions of what those improvements are. And again, the money that's generated with them then has to be spent within those districts.
And what I was going to say too, when we take that and we take the planning process that Aaron's been going through. And so, you know, we started 3,000 feet on the steam area. We're now moving down as we're focusing in on the next level. We're looking at the same thing on the north end of Main Street. As we start moving through those, those projects are now starting to fold into our capital improvement requests that are coming in the budget process. And I've had a couple of conversations literally today about what that's looking like and what they're putting in to then develop that project plan. And so that's where you know, we're just moving through this and seeing all of these projects coming in of which you will see in the budget process. And then you've also got to balance that with the work that we've done with some of the grants that we're having coming forward. So when you take the Kaufman Street project and the grant that we have there, it is connected to Main Street, but it's the bus process, the bus the buses will move to relieve the traffic on Main Street. You then add what we're looking at at the transit station and bringing that to bear. And so these pieces are now starting to come together. And you know, we've been funding some of them ongoing in other budgets to bring money to bear for these projects. There's going to be a continuation of that. We're getting more focused now on the project plan as they're coming out of their planning efforts. It now is moving into how do you operationalize this and create an implementation plan? And that's what we're moving into now.
Thanks to you and to Tony and to Darren.
All right, I don't see any further comments from council. So I guess at this time, is there any further direction staff would like from council on this item? No, not seeing any. Then I move to accept the update as presented by council.
Second.
All right. Thank you very much. I believe that Councilmember Christensen got that second in before everybody else. All those in favor of accepting the update from staff, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none, the update acceptance has passed unanimously six to zero with Mayor Bagley absent. All right. Thank you very much, staff. Very much appreciate that. Moving on to our last study session item, it's, I believe, the last bill from the legislative session for recommendation. And I'd like to welcome Assistant City Manager Sandy Cedar.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protim, Assistant City Manager Sandy Cedar. And I am here with what I believe is the last legislative update. There's been some rumors that the legislative session was going to end like today or tomorrow, and then they were going to adjourn and come back to finish up bills. But we haven't seen anything official yet. Either way, in the next week or two, they've already fulfilled all of their required days to meet. And so this is really probably our last legislative update. If something else comes up, then I'll certainly bring it to you. And in the meantime, let's talk about Senate Bill 21273. This is a measure about pre-trial. I don't even know how to exactly lay it out. It's very similar to Senate Bill 2162, which really talked about, you know, saying that we're not going to be having felonies. We're going to be really restrictive on what kinds of things we can arrest for, really trying to put in some of the the ideas that that courts were able to implement during COVID and trying to make them more permanent. Of course, we're not against necessarily these types of, you know, changes to our legal system. But it does seem like they're doing it without a whole lot of study or a whole lot of data behind them. And so the recommendation is that the City Council opposed 273, unless it's amended to a study. I think it makes a whole lot of sense for them to take a look at what types of things, does it really make sense for us to arrest on? What types of things, you know, do we want to make sure that we're not sending the wrong message to the community about? And so the suggestion certainly from law enforcement is to oppose it. Colorado Municipal League is also opposed. But I recognize that the last time when we talked about Senate Bill 62, you all saw some merit in some of this reform. And so the staff recommendation is to oppose unless it's amended to a study so that we can really take a look at all of the issues combined.
Councilmember Christensen.
On many levels, what I would like to do is support this bill. I think it is, the impulse was very good, which was to not arrest just everybody off the street for any little tiny thing. And the reason for that is because it isn't everybody who gets arrested. We all know that. We all know that I'm probably not going to get arrested. Other people who don't look like me are going to get arrested. So the impulse is to make our arrest and our police force behave in a more equitable way. I do agree with the fact that this can create an environment in which the offenders' rights are are a priority over the community and the victims. Having lived in some very low-income neighborhoods in Oakland, I can tell you that people want people arrested who are doing, acting up, you know? So, you know, as a balance, I think it is good for us to oppose it unless amended. And the the study of the issues and perspectives should be from an equity lens because that is at the core of this. The problem is that laws are being enforced unfortunately across the state in some places in a very unequitable way, and people are just being pulled off the street for nothing. But there are plenty of people who need to be pulled off the street because they're doing things that are dangerous and wrong. So I would go with what staff suggests, which is oppose SB 21273 unless amended to a study of the issues and perspectives.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to follow the staff recommendation to oppose unless amended, signed into by Councilmember Martin. Any other further comments or dialogue? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. The motion passes six to zero with Mayor Bagley absent. Thank you very much, Sandy. Cool. All right. Now it's time. Any council comments at this time? Councilmember Christensen.
I still know people who haven't been vaccinated. And I am just pleading with anybody out there who has not been vaccinated to do your civic duty. This is a pandemic. We need to have the virus hit a dead wall and hit a dead end when it gets to you who are vaccinated. If you're not vaccinated, it's just going to be kept alive and it can mutate and grow stronger. And then we'll have to go through this all over again. So please do what is right and get vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Christensen. I agree. Although Boulder County's numbers are pretty significant, and I think Colorado in general is doing not too bad of a job. So, but yes, I continue to encourage people, go get, go get the poke. Any other council member comments? Okay, seeing none. Harold, can you comment at this time? Or do you got dogs running around or what's going on?
No, I'm good. They're not, they're not going crazy right now. I do have a question for you all. I know when we talked about the open forum, we sent some information out to council. It looked like July 20th would work for everyone for an open forum. And we were wondering if we could go ahead and schedule that for July 20th. Just following up on that, so looking for council input on that one.
I guess first of all, I ask for any council members that would not be able to do that. Councilmember Christensen. Looks like outside of that.
As I said last week, that's the only time this year I can take a vacation.
Was that July?
I just, oh, July.
July.
Never mind. Whoopsie.
Never mind, whoopsie.
Are we good on July twentieth?
I think that was a yes. Looked like a yes.
Yes.
All right. So we'll move the open forum to July twentieth. It leaves July, June fifteenth open. Um, it's kind of hard for us to pull stuff, but you will still have three meetings in, in June. So we meet the requirements that we need to, um, we will probably need the fifteenth. Um. I'm a, uh, I'm just, June fifteenth, we're probably going to need an executive session on that day. Um, to go over an economic development item. So we will still have something unless council wants to look at something else, but that's where we are right now.
And it's also rumored that we'll be in. Camp, in chambers as of the fifteenth. Is that accurate?
Correct. Since it's just, um, since it's just a, an executive session, we will be in executive session and then. Twenty-sixth was canceled and that was a date where we had other scheduling conflicts. So the twenty-ninth will then, then be the first meeting in chambers.
Very good. I know that members of the media were asking for that. Uh, Councilmember Christensen.
I thought also that when we were discussing this, uh, because, uh, Councilman Waters was, uh, not going to be here. Um, that, uh, Jim Golden said that he needed to present something on the fifteenth.
Is it twenty-ninth?
Oh, it is now. Okay, that's fine. Okay.
And then we may also need a pre-session on the twenty-ninth to start the future of transportation conversation. We wanted to start that in a pre-session on the twenty-ninth. The twenty-ninth was the big day. And then the last question I have for you all, so on. Um, on, on June, in June twenty-fifth. Um, coffee with council, do you want to do that in person or do you want to do it remotely?
Well, I know that, I don't know if any council members have been able to swap with Councilmember Waters because I believe he was the one that was not going to be available for the twenty-sixth.
Uh, twenty-sixth, yeah.
Yeah, and Councilmember Beck.
I swapped with him. So, um, actually Coffee with Council is tomorrow. I just wanted to remind people that we have that tomorrow morning. No, I'm sorry. I'm hoping it's Friday, but it's only Tuesday. Saturday morning is our Coffee with Council this week.
So it's been moved up.
Yes, and I, I swapped with, uh, Councilman Waters.
So I guess the question still is, this is then still going to be virtual. Also because it's been moved up. To this weekend.
Yes. I think.
No, it's, uh, it's the twenty-fifth. Um, it's at the end of this month where we have Coffee with Council. So, um, not this weekend. So my question, or the twenty-sixth. Let me get to the calendar. The twenty-sixth is the Coffee with Council this month. And that is the one. And I see with Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring and Peck, so I guess it was shifted. And I guess for you all, the question is, do you want to do this one remotely? Or do you want to do this one in person?
So if it's on the twenty-sixth, I, I'm okay with doing it in person.
Okay, it's the twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Okay, in person it is. Thank you so much, Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring and Councilmember Beck.
Um, since we got on the COVID talk, can I, I, uh, we didn't have the COVID discussion. But is there any word on when the eleven-year-old and under will be eligible for vaccines?
I'm, I'm not hearing anything or at this point on that. As soon as we hear it, we'll let you all know.
Okay.
Sandy, have you heard anything?
Harold, I just took a look at all the Boulder County information we received today and I haven't seen anything to that quite yet. I know a lot of us are crossing our fingers for sure.
Yeah, well, and I, I am teaching summer school. So yeah, technically I'm still not out of school yet. Um, so, you know, as long as I'm working with the little ones, I will be masked.
So I would say my, my understanding is there's no vaccines yet approved for anybody below the age of twelve.
Yeah.
Right. And I think that's where they're typically what we've seen them do is so they started twelve, not long, twelve to, I guess. Fifteen, not long ago, and they'll typically go a little bit of time on that and then they'll start running. And they may be running trials now, but. When they implement, they start the next group and then they move shortly after into that next group. That's, that's what they've been doing thus far through the process.
I heard earliest was going to be late summer.
Yeah.
For anybody younger is the earliest I've heard.
Yeah, and just to give you a sense, since the question was brought up in Boulder County, seventy-two point five percent of eligible Boulder County residents. Are vaccinated, um, and so over two hundred and ten thousand. Boulder County residents twelve or older have received at least one COVID vaccine. Um, so we are performing in, in, at a, at a higher rate in this, than most of the state and. Um, the state's performing higher than other states. Um. So, you know, we're still working on very targeted populations, trying to, to, uh. Really have targeted clinics, but, um, they're really doing well. Um, and as we get into that last twenty-five percent. We are finding that it is more difficult, um, but they're continuing to plug away with that issue. And, and just so you know, the point of why we're asking everyone to, to, to do this is there's been some studies released recently. That I started to read, uh, depending on what the vaccine uptake is for the nation as a whole. It's really getting into that herd immunity concept and what that's going to look like in the future in terms of variants. And, and so that's, that's the emphasis. It continues to be the emphasis right now.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, I'm going to spoiler alert a little bit, uh. A little TV spot that's coming in the near future that I think, uh, my fellow council members participated in. Hey, Eugene, you still awake?
Good one, Mayor Pro Tim. Yes, I am. No comments.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, at this time, I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, the motion passes six to zero with Mayor Bagley absent. Thank you all so much for allowing me to chair this meeting tonight.